Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, November 13th, 2023 at 7:01 PM. Tonight, we have a special session, and that will be followed by five committee meetings. So we have a long night ahead of us, and good discussion, I'm sure. So our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and we do have all members of council present. And next, we will have ordinances for third reading, the first of which is 10923. This is an ordinance accepting a permanent sanitary utility easement from Erie Land Company LLC for the Tyler Park Lift Station. And that is introduced by Councilmember McCary.
President Nisley, I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 109-23.
Second.
Thank you. Section 1 reads that Athens City Council does hereby accept a permanent sanitary utility easement from Erie Land Company LLC for the purpose of building, accessing, and maintaining the Tyler Park Lift Station and related equipment, and the right to maintain, repair, and/or replace as needed the lift station, utility lines, and related equipment in the easement area for the total consideration of $1, more fully described in the agreement in Exhibits A and B attached here, too. And by reference, ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon passage and approval by the mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Do we have any questions or comments from council members, or administration, or other elected officials, or our audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 11123 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 17 Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 17.01 in general, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 111-23.
Second.
Thank you. As discussed at committee in the first reading, these are necessary changes to Athens City Code Title 17 for municipal income tax, Chapter 17.01. These are mandated by changes to the Ohio Revised Code, and there's quite a few of these, including definitions, et cetera, all available on our drive. Thank you, President Nisley.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any questions or comments from council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 11223 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.03 Executive. Other officials, Section 3.03.07 Deputy Auditor. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 112-23.
Second.
Thank you. As discussed, this is a rather simple change to our code, adding in 3.03.07 under Deputy Auditor. Paragraph D, "In the absence or disability of the auditor, the deputy auditor shall perform the duties of the auditor." The only change. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of 11223. Any questions or comments from council members, administration, other elected officials, or audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 11323 is an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 113-23.
Second.
Thank you. There are two appropriations in this ordinance. The 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 155-22 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $14,843.33 to the General Fund Fire for a Bureau of Workers Compensation Grant, and $45,000 to the General Fund Parking Enforcement. This is $25,000 for credit card fees and $20,000 for maintenance, and increasing the total appropriations by the same amounts. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval. Any questions or comments from council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 11423 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03 Rental Dwelling, Short-Term Rental and Housing Permit, Section 29.03.08 Fees. Is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 114-23.
Second.
Thank you, Members F. Another simple change to our code. We will be removing the statement of the fee from Section 29.03.08 and establishing it in a separate ordinance. So this removes the mention of the fee and simply states that it is established by a separate ordinance. That's the only change. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of 11423. Any comments or questions from council members, or administration, other elected officials, or our audience members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have several ordinances for second reading, the first one being 9923. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I General Provisions, Chapter 1.03 Code Fees Established, introduced by all members of council. And if we don't have any questions or comments on this particular ordinance from council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience, we will move on to our next ordinance. And this is ordinance 10223. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I General Provisions, Chapter 1.03 Code Fees Established, to include Sections 7.05.22 and 7.05.26 Parking Rates. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. If no questions or comments, yes, Councilmember Solway.
Yeah, I will say that I voted nay about this last week, and I, after thinking about it, I just don't think we need to increase parking fees. So I'm just going to make that statement now. I just think that it's unnecessary at this point. Having had a couple of parking tickets recently, unfortunately, I'm particularly aware of the cost, and so, and the cost of parking downtown. So I have been thinking about this quite a bit, and I just think that with the changes that we're planning to make to the parking garage and making that, you know, better, and for all 24 hours people will be paying, I just think that this is a unnecessary burden, particularly on people who are service employees. And I did ask around about that, and other people don't seem too concerned, but I feel pretty strongly about it. So I wanted to make that statement. If anybody else feels the same way, I'd appreciate you speaking up.
Councilmember Swank.
I too feel that way and made that point a couple meetings ago. I should have voted no last time, but it got by me. A couple questions, first of all, to the administration. Do we have any idea when the kiosk system in the new parking, or not in the new parking garage, in the parking garage will be up and running?
Well, I can speak to that. There won't be any kiosk or any improvements to the parking garage if we don't pass this increase in the parking rates, because a lot of that improvement is predicated upon that, rather than us taking on more debt for that particular building without a solid plan for how we're going to pay that debt back.
Okay, that's the first one. We've heard that. That comes as a bit of a surprise. The person, I thought it was a done deal and already been budgeted appropriated. So that said, do we have an idea of what that, the implementation of that program is going to cost?
We don't yet. That's probably the last piece of the...
Director Stone's saying we don't have that estimate yet, because that's part of what would be Phase 3 for that project.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. And if no comments or questions from our audience members, then we will move on to the next ordinance, and that's 11523, an ordinance implementing Sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of a community reinvestment area in the city of Athens, Ohio, designating a housing officer to administer the program, and creating a community reinvestment housing council. This was read for the first time last week. We're now at the second reading. And are there any comments or questions from council members, city administration, or other elected officials, or our audience members? Not, we'll move on to 11623. This is an ordinance declaring the improvements to certain real property located in the city of Athens, Athens County, Ohio, to be a real, to be a public purpose, declaring such improvements to be exempt from real property taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 709.40B, requiring the owners thereof to make service payments in lieu of taxes, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit the real property, and establishing a public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments, together with related authorizations. This one is also introduced by all city council members, and is known as a TIF, Tax Increment Financing. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Yes, Councilmember Swank.
Since Mr. Ridge is here today, question for him. This involves a project on the ridges, a TIF. Is it possible to have a TIF and to apply for the funds that have recently come available, $50 million a year for the next four years for single-family home credits?
Yes.
Okay.
With the cooperation, excuse me, of the city, because the way that funding is coming through, it'll be coming through a government entity, but that would be appropriate.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If none, we'll move on to ordinance 11823. This is an ordinance approving the final plat of the Homestead Court and Broadmoor University Estates Planned Unit Development, introduced by Councilmember Grace. And do we have any comments or questions from council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience? Okay. We'll move on to 11923. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07 Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions, Section 3.07.74 Establishment of Commission. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no comments or questions, we will move on to 12023. This is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2023-year-end appropriations introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Are there any comments or questions from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? Okay. We'll move on to ordinance 12123. This is an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522 and authorizing an inter-fund transfer. Any comments or questions? If none, we will move on to 12323. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Directorate to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with the Ohio Power Company, AEP, for installation of electrical service to the new fire station on Stimson Avenue. It is introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to move that we suspend the rules for ordinance 123-23 in order to accommodate a request by the contractors and avoid delays.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember McCary.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know we try to be sensitive about when we are suspending the rules, and in this case, we know we need to build a fire station. We know these easements are necessary. I'll go ahead and read from Section 1. Athens City Council does hereby authorize the Service Safety Director to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with the Ohio Power Company and Ohio Corporation and a unit of AEP for installation of electrical service to the new fire station on Stimson Avenue. A copy of said easement and accompanying plat are attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and second for approval.
Excuse me, we didn't have a motion.
I did not. Thank you. Sorry, sorry. I would like to move that we adopt ordinance 123-23.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. We now have a motion and second. Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. All right. Are there any questions or comments from our council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience members? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 12423 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with Columbia Gas, Inc., for service to the new fire station on Stimson Avenue, and introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nisley. Again, I would like to move that we suspend the rules for ordinance 124-23 for the same reasons as the previous easement, at the request of contractors, to avoid delays.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you have a...
Oh, yes. Now I should move that we adopt?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go ahead and read. All right.
We have a motion and second to suspend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. The rules have been suspended. Now you can make the motion.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 124-23.
Second.
I'll begin with Section 1. Athens City Council does hereby authorize the Service Safety Director to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with Columbia Gas of Ohio, Inc., for service to the new fire station on Stimson Avenue. A copy of said easement is attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, the ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon passage and approval by the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. So we have the motion and second for approval. Are there any questions or comments from council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We have one ordinance for first reading tonight, and that's an ordinance 12523, an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522 and authorizing an inter-fund transfer, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. 12523 is a result of an ordinance that we passed at last business meeting, creating a special revenue fund in the city of Athens, a rainy day fund, to have for when we need it. And this ordinance, which actually, I'd like to make a motion to amend, 125...
You don't need to amend it.
I don't need to amend it?
Also, the council members all have it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmembers should all see the hard copy in front of them, in that the amendment, the ordinance on our drive indicates that this is an appropriation from Safety Services Fund, but it is actually an appropriation from the ARPA Fund, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund 286. We'll be appropriating that money, $500,000, for transfer into our rainy day fund, into our special revenue fund 288. So this ordinance simply authorizes the auditor to make that transfer from ARPA into the special revenue fund. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from council members, administration, other elected officials, or audience members? Okay. All right. And we have finished that special session, and so what we would need to do is have a motion for adjournment of our special session, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So that portion is adjourned. We're now going to bring the committees forward, the first one being the committee of the whole. And this is a revisiting of the topic of solid waste and, and the rates that will be necessary for that. We have received a statement from the city administration, our Service Safety Director, Andrew Stone, and council members have had a chance to read through that. And so I would open this up for discussion. A little bit of background is that we did have two bids earlier this year. Neither of them were accepted, and we had an extension, and now we are looking at this next, the next bid. And this is an administrative decision about the next steps for it. Do council members have any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Swank.
Just one question for Director Riggs. If you could tell us a little bit more about with cans, what exactly that's, that means and what it's going to look like?
Sure. So, appreciate the question, Member Swank. I am Director Stone, not Director Riggs.
I'm sorry.
So I will attempt to speak for myself in this. And if I may, President Nisley, if I could read this statement into the record prior to answering the question in particular, so as I don't know that everybody has it. Does everybody on the council have the statement in front of them? Does anyone need a copy? I printed several copies.
I don't believe I have one, Director Stone.
Is it in the drive now? It's in the... Well, you received it in email this afternoon. Yeah, I... Yeah, just a minute. If I could get that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I thought I wouldn't go by off the cuff on this. I'd prepare a statement that kind of chronicled what you're looking at in front of you. So this is a two-page document. The back is a series of options that we evaluated with regards to rates for 2024, and the statement better describes kind of our thought process as we approach that. So the information below includes the proposed solid waste rate increase for 2024. There are four tables for comparison purposes. However, the course of action I have selected is highlighted. On Tuesday, 14 November, 2023, I intend to send a notice of award selecting Rumkey exercising the option to buy uniform cans for the Athens customers as the lowest and best bid. This option will provide the least cost while still including uniform receptacles that will assist in keeping the community cleaner. This was an extremely difficult decision. AHRC has provided good service to the city of Athens for years, and the relationships they have formed with the community have helped Athens remain a leader in solid waste and recycling. There have been two occasions in recent years where, faced with a lower bid from a competing solid waste hauler, Athens City Council has declared a real and present emergency, obviating the bidding process, and allowed the administration to extend a higher-priced contract with AHRC. Indeed, we did this just this past summer, supplementing the garbage fund with $250,000 in ARPA funds to avoid raising rates. As I evaluated the two bids, I determined both companies have the capability to provide the level of service Athens expects, and both meet the criteria we established for a hauler. In the current inflationary fiscal environment, where the city has raised various rates and fees alongside all the higher prices from private utility companies and retail costs, I do not believe it is appropriate to select a higher-cost solid waste hauler and pass off those costs to Athens residents when there is a lower-cost option. I am concerned about the long-term risk caused by this course of action, in that it may set conditions for Rumkey to establish a monopoly on solid waste collection in the region. There has already been concern about their purchase of the nearest landfill and its impact on collection, and a decrease in the number of haulers in the area. This is why, in the near and median term, I will work with city staff and industry professionals to explore the feasibility of returning solid waste collection to be a government function, either operated completely by employees of the city, or as a partnership with other communities under a council of governments, or COG. If we determine such an operation makes sense, and there is a path to achieve it, I will not hesitate to ask council for the resources and authorities to pursue it and to transition away from a private hauler. Returning to the immediate future, there is a need to raise rates to keep the garbage fund solvent. Under the current emergency solid waste contract, the city is paying around $175,000 per month for solid waste per month for solid waste collection. That is approximately $43,000 per month more than we are bringing in as we subsidized the fund with ARPA money and did not adjust the fees last summer to account for this emergency contract cost increase. The proposed cost increases are listed below that will meet the costs of the new contract and keep the fund solvent. We attempted to incentivize generating less trash by forming a structure that will subsidize the one-can rate. The numbers in red indicate where the actual cost to the contract for the service to be provided exceeds what we proposed to charge, with the other customers and franchise district subsidizing the one-can rate in order to provide that incentive. I request the council take up legislation to set the solid waste rates as recommended. Turn your document over. You can look at the four courses of action we evaluated with the highlighted section being what we're proposing for the increase. So the legislation that we are requesting to start next week will have these particular rates identified. The one-can rate, which is the one that everyone has focused in, would increase $7 to a total of $22.53 per month. As noted in my previous paragraph, you can see that the actual cost for collecting, based on our analysis of the bids and such, would be about $29.88. And so the other higher-can-number customers and the franchise district, as well as the recycling support fee, will help to offset that cost to allow us to incentivize generating less solid waste. As noted, when you look at these rates, there is still a composting function that is less than the current composting rate. I'm sorry, that is slightly more than the current composting rate. However, there is no overall price that everybody pays for. This is truly an opt-in program at this rate. And then also, this notes a 36% increase to the various rates that people in the franchise district pay. And there's a host of those, but we'll apply that same 36% increase number to the, to all of the rates in the franchise district. Finally, the recycling support fee, which is paid by everyone in the city of Athens, regardless if they are on the collection system or not, on their utility bills, increases by 25 cents to $5.75. These are the proposed rates for 2024. That's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry. I can speak to Member Swank's question about what with cans means. So with cans, there will be a variety of sizes of cans that meet the current definitions of cans. So if there's a, I think our current one-can is defined as a 30-gallon can or 32-gallon can. I don't remember exactly, but that option will be provided. Two-can option will be twice the size of that. Will be a single can will be twice the size. And I think as we get into three, four, and five-can ones, I don't know that we're gonna have a five-can option that's five times the size of a single can. It may be a combination of single and double-sized cans from the gallon perspective, but it truly will be the amount that's specified, and that can will be purchased and then spread over the life of the contract, hence the higher cost associated in the with-cans rate than if we had chosen not to proceed with cans.
I'll open it up for comments from council members, and then I know that there are some audience members who may also want to make comments tonight. And you will be allowed the three minutes to make comments. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysli. Thank you, Director Stone, for your statement and providing this for us. I especially appreciate, as I think council expects, your paragraph 3. And I am curious, as you explore with city staff and industry professionals making solid waste collection a government function, either operated by employees of the city or a partnership with other communities, how does that impact the contract that you will sign with Rumke?
Thank you, Member Crowell, for the question. We expressly included a provision in the current contract with Rumke for a 60-day opt-out. So with 60 days' notice, the city may choose to not continue the contract under the term. It is a three-and-a-half-year contract. However, should we land on a course of action that is better for the citizens of Athens under this other approach, then we could exercise that provision of the contract.
Thank you, Director Stone. And I'd just like to make a statement that the Ohio Revised Code, which mandates that the lowest and best bid be selected for these contracts, obviously because every contract is different, doesn't specify what best means. And I would argue that the best for the city of Athens, Ohio, that as Director Stone has said, to provide the level of service Athens expects, I think we are a different community that expects a lot of sustainability principles and continuing to expand the way we would deal with our solid waste and our composting program, and certainly our recycling program. And I would simply like to say that, for all those in the state of Ohio listening, that there needs to be the ability for municipalities to determine what is best for their own people, for their own communities, and that it's not always, obviously, the lowest. The reason why we have that in the Ohio Revised Code, lowest and best, certainly says to me that we can determine what best means. Thank you, President Nysli.
Thank you. Comments from other council members? Yes, Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nysli. I received a communication from Kyle Butler, who resides at 77 Palmero Road, Athens, Ohio, and asked me to read for the record. I am reaching out today as a constituent. I understand that the city council is voting today on a waste management contract. I encourage you to vote in favor of staying with Athens Hocking Recycling Center. Even if Rumke offers a lower price, we should keep it local. Council should also consider what Rumke will do with prices after they drive their competitors out of the market. Thank you for your service on city council, Kyle. I will just add to that, that I do appreciate Director Stone's letter and the fact that that third paragraph did address the concern over the monopoly. And I believe my question is really what the anticipated impact on Athens Hocking Recycling would be even within the next six months if you, if we go ahead and sign with Rumke? Is that a question that you can answer?
I don't know that that's a question that I can answer.
Okay. Could we have another person from the audience answer or respond? Yes, okay.
That's okay.
Then I think we just need you to read your name and address, and let us know if you're representing yourself or an organization.
Yes, so my name is Krista Cummings, and I'm representing Athens Hocking Recycling. And I also had a question about the decision, and wondering, with the awareness that Athens Hocking Recycling has been willing to partner with the city to go back under government control, why the decision would be made to go with Rumke? Because if you then do decide to utilize the knowledge and resources that are institutional with Athens Hocking Recycling, it's gonna be a hard transition away from Athens Hocking Recycling to Rumke, and then it will not be nearly as easy of a transition back to Athens Hocking Recycling. We have staff who have been there for 20, 30, 15 years, who are extraordinarily familiar and who still are part of OPERS because we were part of the city.
So I think the question was, do you know what will happen to Athens Hocking Recycling?
We will have massive layoffs, and we will not have the same resources that we do now in six months.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from council members first? If none, then are there any comments that members of the audience are wanting to make tonight? You'd have up to three minutes. Sure, come on up. And if you can give us your name and your address, and whether you represent a group.
I'm Kathy White. My address is 80 North Clinton Street in the Plains, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. Yeah, I'd first like to say I'm extremely satisfied with the services I receive from Athens Hocking Solid Waste, and I'm ecstatic with the improvements they've made over the years. And I really want to keep it local. I like the idea that if I have a problem or a question, I can call and speak to a human being that knows what's going on. I think, you know, I think that if we're interested in sustainability, it doesn't make much sense to send all of our trash to truck it up to Columbus. And I also would not like to see all those jobs lost in our community. And I just say, keep it local. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else wanting to make a comment tonight?
Hi, Ed Newman. I live on 30 Courier Street. I don't know if you've been paying attention to the national news or not, but, you know, the big monopolies like Google and Amazon are being... They're, it's the same situation there. They have a monopoly. Manufacturers, retailers, and customers are paying more. And in three-and-a-half years, guarantee you, that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna recoup the costs that they didn't necessarily know, you know, as well as Athens Hocking to bid on, an honest and maybe a low-ball comparison. So I think you're giving away, you're giving away the store. And it's not gonna be like an easy transition, as Krista said, if at all, to be able to go back to the same outfit that has been buffering us from monopolies since the 1980s. This is a giant disappointment that you guys go that way. Can't believe it. You know, the climate emergency ordinance is in the toilet with this. You know, Rumke's gonna take their recyclables 75 miles down the road to Columbus. You know, so a lot more carbon's gonna get generated. I don't really think that Athens Hocking won't be able to price sustain their compost operation. So what are they gonna do with compost? Take it to Columbus or throw it out? And this opt-in, as opposed to citywide, is not necessarily the way it should've went in the first place, thanks to Allen and some of his constituents. I guess I had other things to say, but, you know, that pretty much says it. I think this is a big mistake, and we'll be paying for it bigger down the line. And we won't necessarily have a recourse to do what we have now, so, big disappointment.
Thank you, Ed.
Hi, my name is Molly Jo Stanley. I reside at 13820 Strauss Run Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the Ohio Environmental Council and as a passionate member of this community, and urging us to ensure that this solid waste contract maintains high standards of waste division and sustainability and the triple bottom line, profit, people, and the planet, in accordance with Athens' sustainability goals as outlined in the Athens Sustainability Action Plan and the Climate Emergency Declaration. This is a direct quote from that. Athens can act as a global leader through initiating an emergency climate mobilization to convert to an ecologically, socially, and economically regenerative local economy at emergency speed, as well as advocating for regional, national, international efforts necessary to reverse global warming and the ecological crisis. When it comes to solid waste management, recycling, and composting, this is a space in which our community has an opportunity to make great strides in achieving carbon neutrality, lowering greenhouse gas emissions, and creating economic opportunities for local communities. Athens Hocking Recycling Center has been an institution in our region for nearly four decades, positioning us as a leader in innovation in solid waste management and waste diversion. Rooted in our community and deeply committed to the well-being of our residents, AHRC not only continues to improve services and operations, but invests in community outreach and engagement, which is a fundamental driver of sustainability. And with the crucial investment from the city of Athens, AHRC could continue to provide local union jobs and is positioned to be that cornerstone of founding member of a council of governments, which will expand participation and development of waste management and diversion practices in our region. Councilmember Crowell already said this, but let us remember that the Ohio Revised Code, Section 153.09, states, "If the lowest bid is not in the best interests of the community, another may be chosen." AHRC is the best option for the city because it helps us move toward those sustainability goals outlined in the Sustainability Action Plan and the Climate Emergency Declaration. I thank you for your years of investment in this pillar of our community, and this is an opportunity to display your continued commitment to the city of Athens and our region's sustainability goals. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else wanting to make a comment tonight?
Me.
Yes, Councilmember Spielness.
Thank you. We did not see this until today, and I haven't had a chance to really think through it very carefully. But when we went through this process earlier this year, there was a whole set of questions and criteria and all this stuff that was gone through. And I don't know what the process was here. My other question is that because Rumke owns the landfill, I'm afraid that any, if we or anybody else is going to try to do waste management, we're gonna be hit by the prices that they can set at their whim. So I think we're a little bit of a conundrum here about how that's gonna affect us long-term. So those are my thoughts. Again, we didn't see this. We didn't have a chance to digest it for very long. So, you know, I can understand why, and I appreciate all the hard work you did on this. But those are my initial thoughts after having a minute to think about it. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, thank you all for being here tonight and the comments that we've received. And we'll now move on to the next committee meeting. And that's Finance and Personnel Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Crowell, joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Ziff, and Spielness.
Thank you, President Nysli. We have quite a few items on our agenda tonight, starting with the 2024 budget, and I'd like to turn it over to the city administration.
All right, so the document that you have in front of you, if you'd set that aside for just a moment and go off of the, I believe you've already received the 2023 proposed budget ordinance. This ordinance is a compilation of the last couple months of work in preparing for calendar year 2024, budget year 2024. So this would be passed here at the end of 2023 and would set the budget for 2024. Document looks like this. It's a standard budget that we've had for a number of years in the standard format. The top section of it is the general fund, specifically in the various subcategories of the general fund. You know, and the bottom line budget total number for the general fund proposed for 2024 is $18,461,192. And then the other funds, starting with the Safety Services Fund, which is the capital, the capital fund for safety services, with Fund 206, all the way down through the APR Debt Fund 450, are listed next. And then subsequently after that, you have the other, other... And then subsequently after that, you have the other, other funds, which are the proprietary funds, that go from the street rehab fund, starting at five-seven-two, all the way down to nine-oh-three at the end. And the total for those other funds is forty-six million, five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. And so the grand total for the operating budget for 2024 would be sixty-five million, twenty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. So that's, that's that document that you have, and that's what we're, what we're bringing forward. Today, I sent out an email that basically showed you the, the sausage making that goes into that for your, for your use over the coming weeks as you debate this legislation. That document is a spreadsheet that's got a series of tabs on the bottom that feed into this piece of legislation. Now, we recognize that council's role is to appropriate money down to the transaction class level and not down to the individual fund line level. However, we have to make up those transaction class amounts from someplace, and we do our best to forecast what's going to be needed across all the various funds and all the various transaction classes, and that feeds into that document. And then that document also includes references to a couple of prior years so that we can make comparisons when we look at those prior years. And then, like I said, in the email that I sent out to you today, there's a series of formulas that will pull that into that base document. So there's a lot of functionality there, if it's something that you are interested in getting down into the weeds and looking at as you debate this legislation. If you'd go ahead and pick back up this document that I handed out today, there's been some requests over the, the recent months to have a little bit more information than just the standing budget document or standing budget ordinance, to be able to view trends and, and kind of make informed decisions and kind of see where we are relative to, to other years. And so I'll talk you through the graphs on this side. And then the very last thing that you have on the back of this, that document that I handed you, is the 2022 budget document. So if you wanted to do a direct comparison with pieces of paper right in front of each other between 2021, I'm sorry, 2023, end of year, so calendar year 2024, and then, and then the budget we passed at the end of 2022, which is the 2023 operating budget. But let's go back to the graphs first. So the table that you see at the top includes, and while we have to be careful because so many funds are restricted that you can't just mix and blend money, I went ahead and, for the sake of simplicity, attempted to show general funds and other funds. And so for each year seventeen through 2024, I show the initial budget request, or at least what was passed, 2024 being the request, and then what was passed by council going back to 2017, for the general fund overall budget and the other fund overall budget at the beginning of the year. And then I, I show a total. Then below that, I went ahead and looked at revenue for those various years. And you see that the general fund revenue for any given year and the other fund total revenue for any given year across there, and then the total revenue coming into the city. We don't have 2024 forecast yet. I did speak with the auditor today, and I know that that is something that she will be working on over the coming weeks as we're going into 2024. For 2023 revenue, what you see there is an estimate based on the cash flow through the, the end of September, so seventy-five percent of the time through the year, and then I just did a straight-line projection through December to, to pick a number there. All of these numbers are shown then down in the graphs. And so the, the graph on the left is the initial budget versus total overall revenue over, over time, and so you see kind of each year. And then I broke it down. It's the same graph, but only for the general fund and only for the other funds below. Kind of the takeaways that you can see here is in general, there's a several-million-dollar difference between the amount of money that comes into the city versus what we request in the annual budget. And in many cases, year to year, we will come back to you and we will ask throughout the year for additional appropriations that were either unanticipated or it didn't make sense at the time of the initial budget to ask you for that, for that appropriation because we would need an authorization anyway to proceed with some of those savings. And in a lot of cases, some of these are external funds that we may not know that we're going to get. They may be grant funds, they may be bond proceeds, or something of that nature that will come in through the year, and we won't request that necessarily in the initial budget. The notes and assumptions in these various graphs are listed down on the lower left as, as we went forward. An example of a, of a, a given year is over in your upper right-hand side, and this is the, a snapshot of 2022. And so this is a little bit different than what you see in the table there at the top, but what you show there for 2022 is a total amount of revenue of about sixty-six million dollars, and then revised appropriations, and that's at the end of the year. That's not the beginning of the year appropriations, but by the end of the year, in 2022, we had requested appropriations of almost sixty-two million dollars. But then if you look at the actual expenditures for this year, that year, at December 31st, plus the encumbrances, and that is to say bills that would come in, in 2023, that we had to encumber at the end of the year, it was only fifty-six thousand, fifty-six million, eight-hundred thousand dollars there. And so there's a surplus in calendar year 2022 of about nine million dollars. Now, of note, that was the year that we took on, we took on the bond proceeds, and so that shows you a little bit of that, that delta there. But there's a number of other things that are reflected in, in the, the differences in that particular year there. But, but the bottom line is, we, we took in more than we spent in, in calendar year 2022. And, you know, we can look at that in any given year as you go back, but, you know, I don't have it yet for '23 because we're not through the end of the year, and obviously 2024 will be a projection. And then one of the requests from Member Spieldness was to have a list of some of the appropriations that we anticipate through the year that are not accounted for in the annual budget, but we anticipate making as we come through the year. Some of these because we don't know that the revenue is coming in yet, some of them because we're just not quite sure if we're ready to go on this project yet. But, but these are some initial ones that I have. I promise you that I will continue to expand this list in the next couple of weeks as you're debating this budget so that you have, as much as I can anticipate for the coming year. I expect to have, you know, maybe, maybe twice this, you know, by the time that comes. But these are ones off the, off the top of my head that I, I'm fairly certain that, that will come to you here in the coming weeks. The last thing that I would ask you to do is just kind of a quick comparison for 2023 versus 2022 to see the large cost drivers that are, that are, are making the biggest difference. And so if you look at what we're requesting in, in 2020, for the 2024 operating budget, at the general fund by itself, there's a significant increase in the overall budget, you know, about 1.8 million dollars more than, than what was in, 1.7, 1.8 million, than what was in the 2023 operating budget. Almost all of that is driven by personnel costs. We did add several positions in the staffing ordinance that was passed and, and, you know, accommodated some of that with, with associated revenue. Like, for instance, the Assistant Director of Code Enforcement, we talked about that before. There are three additional firefighter positions that are accounted for in the twenty, in the TC 100s, and that was that FEMA grant that we, that we received to be able to do staffing for two years of three additional positions, and so that's accounted for in here. There is an additional position in the council, and I believe additional position in court, although I'm not entirely sure on that. I'd have to double-check. But then also, this accounts for the, the pay raises that we anticipate, as well as additional costs for medical care. And we're going to talk about medical care here with another ordinance going forward and going into 2024. But on, on average, we, we estimated about a four-and-a-half percent pay increase across the board for the various funds, and that's based upon what we're getting ready to propose in the non-union increase, but then also the contractual obligations we have with all the various unions in the city. And we'll, we'll talk about that here in a moment as well. You know, one thing of note related to budgeting for personnel and the, and the, the general fund is, 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 you know, the lion's share of that, you know, well, over eighty percent of that is, is really in personnel costs. When we do accounting and we do projecting for personnel costs, we project every position in the city, and the staffing ordinance is 100% full, as well as a significant amount of overtime to be able to cover demands inside those, those particular funds. You know, if they're, if, if the need arises to be able to do that. And so we're very conservative when we project personnel costs going forward. We also project, you know, you know, the full contribution to the medical fund, to be able to, to support and keep the medical fund sustainable. Now, we all know that in between positions, there are gaps where you're not paying anybody to be there. And so there are savings that are reaped from that. There are also savings that are reaped from not spending as much overtime as you, as you budgeted for at the beginning of the year. And so in any given year, if you look at the burn rate for the, the amount of, of transaction class 100, those personnel costs, at this time of year, we're substantially under what we've appropriated. But, but we feel it's, it would not be responsible at the beginning of the year to not ask for that full appropriation because of the, the, the like, the, the chance that that, that expenditure could occur. And I think that the auditor would agree with me. And, and from year to year, that keeps us solvent, you know, because basically that provides that cushion as you go into the next year of, of carryover funds that, that allow for us to, to, you know, make payroll at the beginning of the year while we're waiting for the revenue to come for the ongoing year. So I think the burn rate, looking at, at the general fund for 2023, and I don't, I don't know because it's not all the way to the end of the year, but I think we'll come in under revenue again for 2023 when we really look at expenditures by the end of the year. But I'm not entirely sure of that. But, you know, this is the request for going into 2024. I realize this is a tremendous amount of information, but this is the, just the committee discussion of this, and there's, there's opportunities for three readings going forward and, and you to, to go and analyze both the documents I provided you as well as today, as well as the, the email that I sent with the, the various items that we provided over, over email. So with that, what are your questions?
Counsel.
Yes, Members Spieldness.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for taking the time to provide us with this additional information that gives us more of a comparison and understanding of the overall direction and where you're going. I know this took extra time, and I really appreciate that. I think it's really important, and I, it's important to me, and I think it's important for the city to be transparent in this way, to give the residents and the public confidence in where the city is going and how we're spending our money and what our plans are. I think that builds trust and support for what the city is doing, and I, I really thank you for that. I do have one question, though. So we tragically lost our Director of Planning, and I'm wondering if there are plans or there's a process in, in place to get a new one.
I can answer that. The answer is yes. There is a process that will be underway. We just spoke about that this morning after all staff, and that being that we're prepared to go ahead and start releasing the, the posting for the position, to start looking for a new planner for the City of Athens. It's a direct report to me, so yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other members of council? Member McCary?
Thank you. I have a question for the administration, just comparing last year's projections on unclaimed funds with zeros across the board, and then next year's with a fifteen-thousand-dollar amount, and was just wondering if administration could help explain what those unclaimed funds would be.
I can address that.
Thank you.
Those are processed through my office. Unclaimed funds are tax refunds, checks that don't get cashed, often pool employees who leave town and don't cash their final check and things like that. Could be a number of things. Even vendors sometimes don't end up cashing their check. So then there's a, a process put forth by the ORC where we have to advertise and, and put a list out so people can be notified, and we send out letters. And, but we don't do that every year. So, and we don't know the amount it's going to be from one year to the next. So, yeah, we're not planning to do it next year. If for some reason we see at the end of the year we have a lot of unclaimed, or uncashed checks, then we might ask for an appropriation and do the process, but right now, we're not planning to, so there's no need to budget money in that line. In that line, the budgeting all depends on what money is available in unclaimed funds. You know, the revenue is unpredictable.
I may have been misunderstanding, but I thought it was that we were projecting fifteen thousand for next year and that we hadn't been. No, I've got it backwards. Mr. Mayor.
You were looking at the 2020. Of the next year, so this is 2023.
I looked at this too, and you're right, I did project it backwards. But that's just why, we don't do it every year.
Okay. So it's not that there are some years where we don't have the unclaimed funds, it's just that we have a different process from year to year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Members Swank?
Just one quick question for Director Stone. I've been jumping, as you suggested, been jumping back and forth between the computer and this printout, which is, this is wonderful, very well put together. In last year, other total funds, thirty-five million and change. The proposed budget, forty-six million and change. So about eleven million dollar difference. Where is the majority of that coming from? Again, I've been trying to jump back and forth and just haven't been able to nail that down yet. What are, what are the big drivers of that eleven million dollar difference?
Thank you, Members Swank, for that question. Hang on just a minute, and I will tell you. This is 23. We are showing most of the Union Street project costs, as well as the other ODOT grant money that the council needs to appropriate, because you can't encumber those at the end of the year, even though you've already appropriated and authorized the expenditure, because it's a direct payment to contractor. They're not in our bank, and so you can't capture them at the end of the year. And you have to reappropriate them every year. And so if you look at Fund 589 on, under other funds in the 2020 upcoming budget, the 2024 budget, under capital outlay, so transaction class 500, there's over nine million dollars reflected there, and that's the lion's share of what that, that difference is. And that, that would not have been included in the 2023 operating budget because we sought that appropriation later in the year.
Yeah, that's almost ninety percent of that eleven million. Very great, thank you.
Other questions on the budget from members of council? Any questions from the audience? Please approach.
Mary Abel, 48 Stratford. I was taking notes, and I may have missed this, but I was wondering, what is the anticipated income projection for 2024? Some point that has to be. I didn't know if that's something that you'll give later on, or did I just miss it?
Sure. Thank you, Mary. We, we, we are working on that, and, and what we are doing now, you know, what I, what I've been looking is at a trend line over the given years, and, you know, we, we kind of base our, our, our request on, on a projection for that trend line. But over the next, you know, couple, couple weeks, we'll be working on that projection as well as looking at what is unspent from 2023 to include with the, the proposed revenue or the, the projected revenue and to make the total available to, to use.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? If I may add to that, I mean, it's a great question, one of the big unknowns at this point in time, even though we have been told recently that a new large employer in the City of Athens, well, I shouldn't say new, but with a new facility, that the Memorial Healthcare System Hospital will be up and operational by April. So those are things that we are really not having easy time forecasting what that income tax revenue is going to look like throughout the remainder of the year as that comes in, but that's something that we're also mindful of with these projections. Member McCary?
Thank you. I did think of one additional question that I just need some help jogging my memory. I recall there being anticipated savings and, I believe, for the wastewater treatment plant as a result of solar panel installation. And if I have that wrong, and the solar panel is supposed to reduce costs or for something And if I have that wrong, and the solar panel is supposed to reduce costs or for something else, I'm just wondering if there are any implications for the budgeting for the wastewater treatment plant improvement that...
Sure. Okay. Great. Thank you, Member McCary. So the the location that that you would see cost attributable to that would be on the second page of the budget document, under the sewer fund plant, so seven five zero point six three seven, and then supplies and services, so transaction class two hundred and three hundred. And what we propose is nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We do not anticipate electric savings for the first six years of the life of those that solar array. And the reason for that is this is a power purchase agreement. And so we basically agreed to purchase the power from the Kokosin, Third Son Kokosin, who's building that array without us fronting any money for it at roughly the same price as we would be paying American Electric Power. And then after six years, we have the option to buy that. And so if we can, after six years, get good financing such that the debt payment would be less than what the electricity electricity payment would be, we absolutely should do that. Or you should absolutely do that because I will probably not be here in six years. But that's that's probably when we'll see the the savings associated with with solar. Of course, in the meantime, we are, you know, running our our wastewater treatment plant with substantially less carbon going in the environment.
And I want to put an exclamation mark on that last comment. You know, this is locally sourced, locally sourced green energy that is going directly into not only the wastewater treatment plant, but the community center, the lab, the seasonal swimming pool, which will see a substantial amount of power coming from that grid to the pool because it's basically operational during daylight hours in which the solar array is going to be generating electricity. So yes, to Director Stone's point, we won't see any great savings for the first six years. But depending on whatever the purchase agreement looks like or the the debt service that we have moving forward, and again, I strongly recommend that whomever's on council that we move forward with the purchase outright purchase of that system because it's at that point where we could see substantial reallocation of the money that we have to budget for the electric bills on those five energy consumers, community center, I failed to mention community center. You know, you look at the the top five energy consumers of mercantile accounts here in the city. It's wastewater treatment plant at the top of the list, followed by water treatment plant, community centers up there as well. Swimming pool uses a lot of energy during the summer months when it is operational. So in the long run, this this whole endeavor could certainly pay off for the City of Athens.
Thank you.
Doing our part to drive down our carbon emissions.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. That ends the budget, and we'll move on to our next item, which is non-union compensation and benefits. I'd like to direct you to the other large handout you have, and Director Lucas will be taking us through this.
Thank you, Member Prow. So I tried to get a little more streamlined this year with a one-pager, which is the small document, the letter-sized, that kind of sums up the different items that I've been working on regarding Finance and Personnel Committee. So the first thing is the non-union non-union benefit changes. Some are clerical, but the the main items that we're looking at this year is updating our definitions for temporary employee and seasonal employee based on ORC language. So essentially, all that does is it gives us a temporary employee that can work up to forty hours a week for a hundred and twenty calendar days. This is something that we're actually utilizing now. So it it's it's meant for if you need to have a position continuity and you need to do a civil service type exam, so you have that window where, oh, we need to have this covered. So you hire a temp until you are able to offer that testing opportunity to the public or internally, however it may work, depending on the position. And seasonal is also up to forty hours a week, but that can cover a hundred and eighty calendar days. So in theory, well, in practice, you can hire a a pool person in April, and they can work through September instead of trying to juggle hours and making sure that we it's a seasonal position. There's you can have a seasonal maintenance worker start in May and work through October. So it gives a little more flexibility by updating these definitions. The second change that I'm proposing is adding two personal days per non-union employee full-time, and these may be taken anytime during a calendar year. So this would be a sixteen-hour bank of time called personal time, personal leave, and it would replace a section of the non- the non-union benefits ordinance that is rarely used. It's a there's there's language that allows for employees to work ninety consecutive days, and if they do that without taking any accrued leave, they can take a paid day off. But they have to use an accrual to do that. So it's not utilized much, very rarely, actually. So this would provide another opportunity for employees to deal with things that just happen. They might not necessarily be sick. They might not want to take a vacation day. But, you know, the tree fell on my roof. I need to take care of that. So another opportunity. So with this sixteen hours of personal time and the birthday holiday, which is also a form of personal time, can be taken anytime during a calendar year, we're proposing to give our employees, our non-union employees, twenty-four hours of of paid accrued leave that they can use in eight-hour increments when needed. These will not carry forward, use or lose. And the last major change for the non-union benefits is we're proposing to adjust parental leave to include three-quarter time and permanent part-time staff and prorate those hours accordingly. So for a three-quarter time employee, instead of two hundred and forty hours of parental leave, they would be offered a hundred and be able to take a hundred and eighty hours. And a part-time, permanent part-time staff member could take a hundred and twenty hours of parental leave. So those are the three major changes to the non-union benefits ordinance.
There are questions from council about the non-union benefit changes, the committee, I should say. Other members of council? Yes, Member Grace?
Just a a note of appreciation for your work on this. And as as a council member who brought forward parental leave a few years ago, I absolutely approve of the expansion to include three-quarter and permanent part-time staff. So thanks for for working on that. And also, the the personal days are are a valuable thing for employees to know that they have those, and that is whether it's taken as a fix-your-roof day or a mental health day, being able to to know that that you have that time is is valuable for individuals to take care of the things that are involving their taking their time, part of their lives outside of their work. So I just want to say I'm in favor of these changes and appreciate the work on them.
Thanks, Member Grace. Any questions for Director Stone from the audience? Excuse me, for Director Lucas?
Everybody's calling, so...
Okay. Do you want to just move down into your...
I can just go to the the compensation side. Want me to just go there?
I think so, yeah.
All right. So the the spreadsheet, as it's I've I've come to affectionately call it over the last few years in creating this thing. I like to go over it with you because I understand it, but I sometimes I think I'm my own worst enemy here, and it's confusing. So what I am proposing here, this is year three for our five-year cycle of our pay study. So this is the year that we're intended to look at positions and see if we're on the mark or if we're behind, and also adjust pay bands and some positions if if necessary. So that's what this document entails. So top to bottom, we have pay bands starting at twelve and working our way down to one in all the positions listed and separated by the color scheme just for readability. The first set of pay range numbers are the current numbers, and then the two thousand and twenty-three rate that these employees are currently making. The third set of numbers, which is labeled proposed pay range change, this is based off of the consumer index from two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three and averaging them. So it was about eight point one percent in two thousand and twenty-two, and we're looking at about four point one percent so far in two thousand and twenty-three. So I just adjusted the bands by six percent. So that's where the new minimum and maximum numbers come from, is those pay bands were adjusted by six percent. Does that make sense so far? Okay. So what I'm proposing is a four point five percent cost of living allowance for all bands. And then that second number that says four point five percent per hour increase is what each employee will get with a four and a half percent increase, and then their final two thousand and twenty-four hourly wage if it falls with the four point five percent, and I'll explain that in a second. So are we still following? Okay. So currently, what that looks like at the bottom, there's two yellow numbers. The first number is the total hourly rate change with a four and a half percent increase, seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. And then the second number is the total increase in dollars. So seventy-two point two-nine times two thousand and eighty are the number of hours that you work in a calendar year. And that gives us a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents is what four and a half percent would be. Now, that's not perfect because there are some staff changes and some that aren't even getting a dollar figure, so we don't really know what that's going to equal. So most likely, it'll come in at the minimum rate of the pay grade that they're in or ten to twenty-five percent through, based on if they're an internal candidate or a external candidate coming in. So and I have those listed as well, some of those changes. So you passed the staffing ordinance last week, I believe, or was it two weeks ago? And some of the changes, so in these in these bands, you see some off-color shades. Those are changes. So in the in the blue bands, the light blue is a change, and in the green bands, the dark green is a change. And those come from the non-union ordinance and also some changes that I'm proposing. So, for example, the Assistant Director of Development Enforcement Facilities is a proposed pay band eight. And I list those on our on your on your handout here, those changes. So proposing that band to be eight, and that would be in line with our other assistant directors throughout the city. The project inspector, which is replacing, the instrument technician is proposed to be a pay band six. Program specialist for childcare is expected to be a pay band five. And then some changes that I'm proposing that are based on job description changes that have happened. For example, DEIA coordinator, it was expected that the the job description would change over time simply because we didn't know how the position was going to grow. It's grown into a much more outward-facing, community-focused position. So trying to balance that with the internal side, proposing to change that to a change that position to a pay grade five and change the status to exempt does meet the criteria for exempt status, which would allow that position to have a little bit more flexibility in terms of community engagement and such. And then also administrative coordinator HR, the nature of that work has changed, and I have updated scoring, if anyone would like to see it, changed the title to HR coordinator, pay band five. Administrative coordinator for engineering public works has also undergone some changes, taken on some supervisory responsibility, so proposing to change that pay grade from a three to a four. That's all I have about that unless there's some questions.
Yes, Members Spillings.
Well, thank you for your for your work on this. So I I'm just scanning the positions, and I don't see code enforcement officer on there. Is that a union position?
That's a union position.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Lucas, I do have one question. Just curiosity, I I see that the single asterix positions are FLSA Fair Labor Standards Act exempt, which I I take it means they cannot they don't receive overtime pay.
Correct.
What determines? I mean, it's many of the positions at the top, I understand, I think, but why why does a program specialist, why are they FLSA exempt?
So there's four factors that come into play. The first one is there there has to be a minimum income threshold and which these positions meet. The second one is are are these positions unique enough that they don't have a a comparable? So in the cases where you see FLSA exempt, you don't have a comparable position. So the program specialists work unique schedules simply because of programming. And I'm not trying to be, you know, funny, it's just it's it's the nature, like they there might be some things that go on in the evening, or there might be some weekend activity, and it's a way for those folks to have a little more flexi flexibility in their schedules.
Okay. Thank you.
And still meeting the minimum thresholds of the of of the of the position to get FLSA exempt.
Okay. I appreciate that. Other questions from the committee? Questions from other council members? Members of the public? The city administration, anything to add tonight? Thank you, Director Lucas, for being with us.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to our two thousand and twenty-four income tax mix agenda item. Out of there, would you like to join us for this? I'll just let remind everybody that our municipal code directs funds to specific or directs our income tax revenue or earnings into specific funds, and the city administration has been looking at ways to adjust this income tax mix in order to sort of help different departments. And to their credit, they've gone through a number of different scenarios and tried to look at this in a number of different ways. And what they have finalized to recommend to to city council is that the Recreation Fund two seventy receive a two percent increase in 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 the income tax mix that is coming to that specific fund. Currently, they are receiving six percent of municipal income tax, and the city recommend city administration is recommending that be eight percent. And the percentages that would be decreased in other funds would be the street fund two twenty would be reduced from seventeen point five to sixteen point five percent, and the capital improvements fund five eighty would be reduced from three percent to two percent. So that is the income tax mix change. Would the city administration like to add anything there?
I think you did a great job explaining it. You know, we do make adjustments to this mix. I don't want to say annually, but every so often, we do see the need to adjust, and the reason we landed on capital improvements and street is that the street fund is healthy, and we've done, I think, a wonderful job. When I say we, I'm talking about engineering and public works in terms of our paving schedules and getting a lot of streets milled and repaved to where, as council may already know... as council may already know, we're seeing less and less streets that are graded as three. As a matter of fact, I don't believe there's any street that's graded as three. Um, it's typically of late, they're graded at four or higher. Nine being a brand-new street, um, Stimson Avenue would be a great example. Um, a one would be essentially a goat path somewhere in the city. A street that, uh, needs some serious, serious repairs. So, um, that's, that's the reason for taking, uh, a percent from the Street Fund and then the Capital Improvements. Um, I had been kind of protecting that particular fund line for a number of years with the thought in mind, among other things, making improvements to the armory. But since we have seen, um, a substantial amount of money coming in from state and federal funding to, uh, bring the armory to fruition with it becoming a usable space that's open to the public, um, that we were able to cut back by a percent from capital improvement. Again, it's a year-by-year decision that we make as we're moving this forward. So when we're at this point in time in two thousand twenty-four, we may look at the mix again and decide that we can, can make some further adjustments if we see that, uh, you know, the department that is truly a service to our community, may have more effective programming going on to where revenue is coming in, you know, that will help offset these changes and, and maybe change that mix in two thousand twenty-four with the budget moving forward, but we'll have to see how this goes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I'll, I'll just say to start this off that I'm in full support of this, uh, increase to the Recreation Fund. Uh, we know we have a, a wonderful, uh, but expensive, uh, city pool. Um, and, uh, a lot of requests from, uh, those who recreate in the city of Athens for, uh, additional, infrastructure fields, all sorts of things. So, um, I'm in support of this. Um, uh, committee, any questions from the committee? Other members of council, Members Swank?
If we were to, uh, sign a dollar figure to a percent, what, what is one percent? Five hundred thousand, seven fifty, two hundred thousand?
I wish it was that much.
In two thousand twenty-three, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
One hundred and twenty?
Yeah, I'm hopeful with all those doctors on close roads starting to work, then it would be greater than that, um, going into two thousand twenty-four. But, but that's what we're estimating.
Good, great, thank you.
Any questions from the city? I mean, from the citizens of Athens? Okay, thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is, uh, health insurance. Director Lucas, are you gonna take this off? Great.
Uh, so thank you, Members Crowe. Each year, uh, we work with the Employee Benefit Service Center to, um, do a bidding, uh, process for our, our health insurance, vision, dental. And this year, uh, the, basically what we propose to council is the approval of the, the contract with, uh, EBSC, uh, which is Employee Benefit Service Center. Their rates have gone up just a couple thousand dollars, um, between this year and last year. Uh, but, you know, getting into the plan a little bit, our, we're not, we're not proposing to raise employee premiums any, uh, for health or for medical insurance, health insurance. Uh, so keeping that same premium for, uh, for, uh, employee, employee plus children, employee plus spouse and family. And the other insurance that's remaining the same, uh, in terms of premiums is, uh, our vision, uh, insurance. However, our dental is going to go up a little bit, um, per, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-four. So, um, not a lot of changes there, so, but, um, regarding the, regarding the plan, the, the administration, um, support for Employee Benefit Service Center, they charge us fees for, um, the services provided. And they've been extremely helpful in helping us keep this, our, our insurance rates competitive, extremely competitive for, uh, for our staff.
Questions from the committee? Other members of council? Citizens? Shall we just, the next item on our agenda is, is medical insurance?
It's the stop-loss contract.
It's the stop-loss contract, right.
So, so, and, 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 and just going back to the health insurance, I, I have a document here. It, it's not for, uh, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna print out a lot of copies of this. But if anyone would like to come and talk to me about how we do, uh, what we do, I'm, I'm more than, uh, happy to explain some of those things to you. Um, just meet with me. Ask some email exchanges or whatnot. Um, so the stop-loss, um, I, I, I am, I, I'm looking at this number that I put in the, in the handout. I, 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 I think I made a minute mistake there, um, so I need to do some different math. But the bottom line is, is the stop-loss, um, policy is it protects us since we're self-insured, you know, so it, it helps us deal with those catastrophic cases, um, that sometimes happen. And unfortunately, in two thousand twenty-three, we've had a number of those that have, uh, increased uh, beyond, uh, the specific deductible of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, you know, so having this stop-loss insurance is really beneficial to protecting, um, our rates, so. But I, I need to check with, uh, the auditor on these numbers and make sure they're right because I'm not so sure, um, on that, on that number, so. My apologies on that. But essentially what we ask council each year is to approve the stop-loss contract and the, and the third-party administration contract.
Thank you. Questions from the committee for Director Lucas? Yes, Members Spillings?
So I, I guess I'm not clear what exactly it is. I mean, I hear the purpose of it, but what is it exactly?
Take it back.
So the city's self-insured, meaning that, that a certain amount of, uh, money per employee is placed into the medical fund. And if you go back to the budget, um, at the end, that's the eight-six-six fund. And so every, every, um, every other fund, based on the number of employees they have, has to put twenty-two thousand dollars into the, into the medical fund per employee. And then, uh, EBSC is the third-party administrator, and they actually act like an insurance company, but they're not. Um, and they, they act like an insurance company, and then they use the city's own funds to pay those medical bills.
Okay, yeah.
When any particular claim hits a hundred and ten thousand dollars, then we go into the secondary insurance market, the stop-loss insurance market. And that's to protect that fund. And, uh, unfortunately, this year, we had several, um, you know, some years we have great years where, you know, maybe only one or two will hit that specific deductible. This year, we had about six or seven.
Wow.
Um, and that, and that, that hurts, um, but that's why you have the stop-loss insurance. And so, um, the EBSC will go and competitively bid stop-loss insurance for us year in and year out. Um, and they, they, they've bid it in, uh, the amount that, um, we'll give you. And I, like I, like, uh, Ron said, I don't think this number is correct. But the amount we give you in, in, part of the ordinance is the, is the best price we got when they, when they competitively bid that.
Thank you.
And, and can I ask a question? For, for the ordinance, you need the co- a copy of the contract, correct? Is that what we, I typically provide?
As an attachment.
As an attachment?
Yes.
Okay.
Been to this before.
Other questions for Director Lucas on stop-loss? Okay, I think we're done with Director Lucas, and we're on to the FOP contract, which I think Director Stone will?
I can speak to it quickly or, or, uh, Director Lucas can. On the document that Director Lucas gave you, um, yeah, it basically is a summation of a couple of the items that I talked about in executive session, um, uh, last week. Um, and it's basically, uh, the, the kind of highlights, uh, for the FOP contract is, is over three years. It's a four point five percent, four point five percent, and then a four point two fi- five percent raise. Uh, retention bonuses each year, um, are five hundred dollars in year one, seven fifteen year two, and a thousand in year three. Um, an increase in shift differential, a decrease in the amount of injury leave, uh, that each employee is afforded. Uh, we did, uh, add that parental leave provision, provision that the non-union, um, members have. That was something they asked for. We added a modified duty, um, uh, ability. Prior to this, we weren't able to, uh, put an officer that couldn't, you know, functionally work desk duty, you know, that, that maybe couldn't be on the street. Uh, in that capacity, they would, they would have to be out and take sick time or, or make even go into workers' comp um, if they had an injury or, or in some cases, maybe not a work-related injury. Uh, but we think that this is, this is a useful way to manage the, the, the system. Um, a slight increase in the, in the uniform allowance and then a wellness and fitness incentive similar to what we did with the fire department. Uh, and then lastly, we did recognize, um, modifying the, uh, the education incentive that they already had, uh, to make it slightly broader. Uh, understanding that, that, you know, we've got a fairly educated, in fact, we've got a very educated workforce when it comes to our, our police department. And so, uh, it's something we think is, is, is a fair contract, uh, compared to, um, where we started. Um, it's fair in that it will, um, you know, provide them the cost of living increases that, that they need. Uh, it allows the city to, um, stay competitive when we're hiring. But at the same time, it keeps our costs down compared to what, um, the initial ask from, from the FOP was. So, uh, we think this is a fair contract. And, and the actual document will, this is the highlights of the document. You will have the document, uh, to be attached to the ordinance on Monday.
Thank you, Director Stone. Uh, questions from the committee on the FOP contract? Other members of council? Members of the public? Okay, thank you. That completes the FOP contract agenda item. We are now on to the, uh, Athens, uh, city convention, county convention and visitors bureau contract. We, uh, have been doing a three-year contract with the ACCVB. And, uh, the contract is ends at the end of this year. And so we will be looking at, signing another, uh, the city will be looking at signing another contract. Yeah, it basically, uh, commits the, the city to, um, providing that fifty percent of the, uh, uh, from the tourism front, from the TGT tax, um, to the, to the visitors bureau for their operations. Or to partially fund their operations. Are there any questions or would the city administration like to say anything further about the, um, ACCVB contract?
Nothing other than just as a reminder to council that under Ohio revised code, we are required to give fifty percent of our transient guest tax to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which was approximately, I was looking at the two thousand twenty-three budget. We had budgeted for three hundred thousand. I don't think that we actually, you know, um, received that much. But, you know, they, they get exactly fifty percent of whatever revenues is generated throughout the year, so two thousand twenty-four. Out of your head, uh, we're looking at maybe two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the coming year for what would actually be collected for the transient guest tax, or do we have an estimate at this point?
It should be higher.
Yeah.
Uh, before COVID, we were bringing in about four hundred and twenty-five thousand a year split. So that was two hundred thousand plus. Should be more like three hundred and fifty thousand. It's, it's come up, you know, since, uh, COVID. And so we are about back where we were.
But to the utterest point, it's split in half. Half goes to the general fund and half goes to, um, transient, or to, uh, Convention Visitor.
Thank you. Questions from the committee on this contract? Other members of coun- oh, Member Reisner?
Yeah. Does the Visitors Bureau, uh, have any intentions of changing their domicile or are they going to remain where they are?
Uh, there is discussion going on, uh, but that doesn't necessarily pertain to this piece of legislation, is it?
That's what I was getting at. I just wanted to know if there was anything in the contract about it.
No, there is none.
Other members of council? Member Grace?
Any changes to the contract as opposed to prior years, like?
I don't believe there are any changes to the contract. We are looking at the rental agreement, but that's separate.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the public? Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, the City Hall one hundred and fiftieth anniversary renovation. Mr. Mayor, can I turn this over to you?
You can't. I mean, this is, uh, where am I?
It's just the authorization.
Yeah, yeah, right. So this is authorization, um, for expenses associated with the phase two and three renovations to the, this building, which again is indicated in the, on your agenda. The building next year, two thousand twenty-four, will be a hundred and fifty years old. It'll be the sesquittennial. And this will help with the renovations that are needed with the cupola um, and putting clockworks back in the currently armless clock faces that are up there. Uh, but also some much-needed repairs to the cupola because, um, as has been indicated to us by, uh, Scott Thompson of the Government Channel, that there is leakage that is going on up there. So we, we need to address it for sure. But it'll also be addressing other weatherization around the building itself. So this is, this is going to be a great proj- project.
And to dovetail off the mayor, um, you already appropriated this money. This is the authorization. Um, even though we think that we can do each part of it for under the bidding threshold, since we're all, we're kind of calling it all one project, we thought it appropriate since it was greater than, uh, the amount necessary for, for council to authorize that we would go ahead and request an authorization.
And remind me, is this Hebe coming back, coming, or is this, is that the next, uh?
Uh, we can go public with that, yes. Um, the plan is to bring the statue Hebe up to the city building. Hopefully, Hebe will be installed right across from the utility billing office. There have been a number of citizens who, uh, are some of our older citizens who have, have made it clear that they would love to see Hebe again. Some citizens, believe it or not, here in the city of Athens got to experience Hebe when Hebe was located in front of the courthouse. She was part of a fountain, um, that sat over there, which was kind of unique in the way it was built. There was four drinking fountains that people could use. And there was actually four drinking fountains that were about a foot off the ground for canines. People were thinking ahead of dogs way back when, uh, eighteen ninety-five, to be exact, when Hebe was installed in front of the courthouse. So it'll be bringing Hebe back. Hebe is currently located at the water treatment plant, um, inside and while visible from the street. One cannot access Hebe to actually go in and see her unless it's by appointment. So this is, this will be nice. She'll be open to the public.
Excellent. Uh, any additional questions for the city administration on one hundred and fiftieth project? Okay, moving on to the last item on our agenda, Appalachian Community Grant Cycle Round Two.
There you go. All right. Uh, thank you, Members Crowe. Um, I, I sent, um, at the end of last week, as I just got it at the end of last week, um, the memorandum of understanding template and agreement with Ross County, uh, for Ross County to be the lead applicant in round two of the Appalachian Community Grants Program. If you remember back to round one, Athens is serving as the lead applicant and we were recipients. And then we are administering those funds for, uh, several other communities, um, as part of round one. For round two, we thought, um, based on reading the tea leaves, that it was not in our interest to be a lead applicant again. For, you know, just spreading of the wealth as, as, uh, the Ohio Department of Development is choosing where that money goes across, um, uh, southeastern Ohio. However, we, uh, we, we do want to come to the table. And so Ross County has a strong, um, group of communities that are applying. What we are applying for, um, is somewhat of an extension of the Uptown Project that, uh, is already going to be built this summer. That's a streetscape project on, on, on Washington and, and State. But this is to, to bury the, uh, overhead utilities on the State Street. Um, a portion of the, uh, uptown area, in the, in the uptown area, as well as burying overhead utilities in the Carpenter Street, uh, area. And the goal is downtown revitalization, uh, in an attempt to basically make our whole uptown, our whole uptown area look similar to, to the Union Street, uh, and Court Street, um, areas. So, um, it's, it's worth a shot. I'm gonna have to ask you to go quick on passing this because, of course, the, uh, information just came out last week and it's due on November twenty-third. So, um, but, um, we will work in this, the rest of this week to get the, uh, memorandum of understanding filled out. So it's in a form that, um, council can, can, um, digest and, and then authorize me to, to enter into. And I, I really don't think we're committing the city to anything, um, by doing this. We're basically stepping to the table and asking for several million dollars to do this, um, this effort.
Thank you, Director Stone. Does that mean that the Washington Street project coming up this summer will include the, or we're planning on that, you're hoping?
I, I, we're, we're I am focused like a laser on getting the electric on West Washington Street underground with part of that project, not contingent upon the Appalachian Communities Grant. So I need to get my, my friends at American Electric Power to, to play ball with me, but, um, I, I really want to do that.
Mayor, do you want to say something?
I, I do. I just to kind of, uh, also point out to council that to have the Carpenter Street project included in this through ECG, it, it's it's fitting, if you think about it, because the Armory affronts that street as does Mount Zion Church. And so to make sure that we're making that look as attractive as the other streets that we've been discussing, it all kind of bundles together, if you think about it. As I understand it, Mount Zion Baptist Church has been put in through another pure planner and is going through that process to have the planning and then Round One, or Round Two applications. And to also mention this briefly to council, I understand that through another collaborative with different entities, that Athens Farmers Market is also being included in another ask that's out there along with AceNet, looking at making improvements, as well as Chester Hill. And who they end up partnering with regionally, I don't know at this point in time. We assume that, or imagine that it could be also through the Ross County lead because I understand that there's farmers market related projects within the Ross County's planning group.
Thank you for that information. Any questions from the committee? Other members of council? Public? Thank you, President Nysley. That ends Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. We'll move on now to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Grace, joined by Councilmembers Crowell, McCary, and Spieldness.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, President Nysley. And starting off this evening, the first thing on the committee agenda is the contract with Sunday Creek Horizons for 2024. And this, as I think many of us are now quite familiar with the work of Sunday Creek Horizons. Their standout project work for us on the Armory Project in really finding and advocating for funding for projects here in the city. And they have, I would say, have done a remarkable job at partnering with us and working on those things. And we do work with them through an annual contract. And I'm scrolling through my email trying to find the message in which I had the attachment. Unfortunately, there, you haven't handed me. But I could also just let Director Stone speak to the specifics of it. Yeah, go ahead. In terms of the pricing and the terms of this contract, I didn't want to speak off the cuff about them.
Sure. Thank you, Member Grace. So the last, last year, we didn't get authorization until several months into the year, and I just attempted to do it a little earlier this year. The appropriation is included in the annual budget. The authorization, you know, because it's greater than $75,000, it requires council authorization. They're asking for $12,000 a month for their services, so we're looking at $120,000 for the year. The services, we're in the attachment. There are five broad categories. Grant funding and identification and project management with those grants when they, when they do come in. Academic development and planning activities, you know, basically an extension of some of the work on the Simpson Avenue corridor, as well as other areas in the city to go after both employers and development plans to improve economic conditions. The single-family tax credit, single-family home tax credit, I think Member Swank asked about that to Mr. Ritchie earlier. And then we've also talked about it in relation to the Woods Edge Project as a potential effort with that new program of the state. Water and sewer infrastructure with new funding coming out of the Ohio Department of Development. You know, going after that funding and helping the city be competitive for that. And then lastly, just general legislative advocacy on a variety of different things that, that we attempt to pursue that are in the interests of the city. Having them in our corner, we think, will, will help us in 2024.
Thank you for that quick overview. And the, this is a reminder for members of council. They have already assisted in securing approximately 2.4 million from the Appalachian Community Grant, 600,000 from the Ohio Capitol Bill, 975,000 from Jobs Ohio Vibrant Communities Grant. So in terms of a ROI, we're looking at a pretty stellar return at this point. And I think if they can be of assistance for some of these future projects, that's very beneficial to our, our city. Does anyone on the committee have questions about this? Yes, Members Spieldness?
Okay, I have two questions. And one is, you know, they've been, Sunny Creek Horizons has done a wonderful job, as illustrated. And they also have helped us during this time when our planning director was ill or gone. But it begs the question at this point, how will their work complement the work of the new planning director? And is that taken into consideration as you're looking at this? So that's one question. My second question is, there's a number six says, "Consultants shall keep all printed, digital, and verbal communications with client confidential. The consultant will not disclose any information." So I guess that, my question is, how does that work with sunshine laws? Because they're interacting with us and, you know, how does that, I just want to get a sense of that.
Sure. So to be clear, the city is who is subject to the sunshine laws. So if someone were to ask us about communication with the, with the consultant, then certainly we would have to give them any, any written communication or documentation we had. The reverse is not necessarily true. I mean, they, if someone asks them, they don't have to give that away. So, so, you know, if I were interested in what we talked about, I would come to me and ask the question because I have to give it to them, and they don't. You know, and I think it's a standard clause that they put in all their, they don't just advocate for local government. They advocate for private entities.
Sure.
And I'll let the mayor speak to the, the point about the planner.
Sure. So as we start looking at applications coming in for a planner, for someone to step into that role, you know, and when they do step into that role, whomever we decide upon to become the next planner for the city of Athens, it's going to take quite a bit of time for that individual to fully come up to speed. And I think to work with Sunny Creek Horizons, the wealth of knowledge that they have already acquired going through, again, the capital budget ask, the, as we've already discussed them all. Basically, the ROI that is for every dollar spent under the current contract, it's, the return is $45 and change, which is a staggering number when you think about it. And so for the new planner to learn from what Sunny Creek Horizons has been involved in. But, you know, the other thing that really won't be in the wheelhouse of a planner, if anything, it would be in the wheelhouse of the mayor, but also Sunny Creek Horizons, is to know how to advocate at the state and federal level for various funding like we've been able to acquire. And so that isn't the role of a planner. Certainly the planner will, will, having Sunny Creek Horizons moving forward will help ease our new planner into the processes that we typically go through when it comes to implementing the funds for big asks that are big funding mechanisms coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I do have a follow-up though. So, but that does suggest that perhaps in the future, because they're expensive. Obviously their ROI makes it worth it now. But once we have a planner on board in the future, can you anticipate that their role will maybe diminish a little bit as the planner gets fully up to speed?
No, I don't.
Maybe not this year, but next year?
I don't. I don't see it diminishing at this point in time. You know, we're seeing something that we've never seen before with the state budget, and that is $750 million that the governor and the House has decided to put forward to large catalytic projects in the state of Ohio. And again, I, unless we're able to find a person who understands urban planning, GIS, and advocating at the state and federal level for funding, that's a tall order to ask of a planner as opposed to what their trade is, and that is urban planning. And so I don't see us finding someone who can fit that bill. And for the mayor to do it on, on their own, whomever that mayor is, that's a Herculean thing to try to accomplish, given all the other responsibilities of my position. Would I love to be able to go up to Capitol Hill or to the State House and advocate for all kinds of money? Absolutely. Is that the best approach when we have someone who, who does this and does this well? I don't see that changing, quite honestly.
The advocacy part, I never thought was the planner's role. But some of the other things, and that's where I thought maybe in the future, that might diminish a bit.
I would say, in addition to the advocacy, there's also the grant writing and being able to turn projects around with remarkable speed as they're announced. Like even, even if we're not the lead, like to participate in an opportunity for funding, the capacity of a full-time staff member would have to be so flexible to be able to, to turn around that kind of work and be prepared to advocate and write the necessary things. So are there other questions from the committee about this contract? Questions from other members of council? Members of the audience? Any other, anything else? Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is more new paperwork, something. Tonight is the night for lots of new information and in paper form, apparently. So I handed out to everyone, I think, everyone has it here. And also left copies on the table for other members of council. This is a draft ordinance to add a section in Title 11 to, of our city code through which the city would license tobacco retailers. And this is, well, I'll read the draft whereas's to explain a little bit of the whys. And so it's, "Whereas tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable disease, disability, and death in America, causing more than 480,000 premature deaths annually. And another 16 million people have serious illness caused by smoking or secondhand smoke exposure." And, "Whereas the city of Athens recognizes that young people are particularly susceptible to the addictive properties of nicotine and that youth who begin using tobacco and nicotine products are more likely to become lifelong users, reversing previous progress in the reduction of overall tobacco use rate." And, "Whereas the city of Athens has the authority to protect life, health, and safety by requiring tobacco retailers within the city to obtain and maintain a tobacco retailer license as a condition for engaging in the business of selling tobacco products." And, "Whereas tobacco license," oh, I've got the, yeah, "The tobacco retailer license," I've got my acronym switched around, "is an evidence-based strategy to reduce initiation to nicotine and tobacco through improved compliance with minimum legal sales age and other important tobacco sales regulations. And where a tobacco retailer license is a regulatory tool that further enables the city of Athens to monitor tobacco sales, fund compliance efforts, and create effective penalty and suspension structures for repeated violations." And, "Whereas the tobacco retail license laws in other communities have been effective in reducing the number of illegal tobacco sales to underage purchasers." So this is legislation through which tobacco retailers in town would apply to have a license for sale. This is legislation that is already in place in many cities in Ohio. The CDC recommends that states, or if not states, then municipalities license tobacco retailers. And this creates a structure through which the city can know what entities, what businesses are selling tobacco products. And a few definitions, for instance, tobacco product, which is key to this particular legislation, especially, "Is any product containing, made of, or derived from tobacco or nicotine and is intended for human consumption or is likely to be consumed, whether smoked, heated, chewed, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, or ingested by any other means, including but not limited to a cigarette, a cigar, pipe tobacco, chewing tobacco, snuff, or snus." It also includes any electronic smoking device and any substances that may be aerosolized or vaporized by such device, whether or not the substance contains nicotine. And that's an important portion of legislation is to have an idea of what retailers are currently selling vaping products and where they are located. And if they are licensed by the city, then compliance checks can be done by the Health Department. And that's one thing that researchers have said that the state of Ohio is way behind on currently is actually following through with compliance checks. Ohio is a tobacco 21 state. Sales of tobacco products to individuals under the age of 21 are prohibited. But there's very little follow-up investigation or action being taken to enforce that. So this would be a mechanism through which our local Health Department would conduct spot checks or compliance checks. And those are instances where a person over the age of 18, but under the age of 21, goes into a business, a retail establishment, at the direction of the Health Department and attempts to purchase something that they should not legally be allowed to purchase. And the legislation would establish a, what constitutes a violation, which is selling to someone who's under the age of 21, or selling without having the license, selling from a vending machine. And if, if a violation is noted, then it also lays out a mechanism for penalties for those violations. Primary motivation to me is to reduce access for people under the age of 21. That is, is the primary driver of, for me, as far as motivation, by increasing enforcement spot checks of retailers. And that is a way that we could, this is a way that we can do this. An additional motivation will come when I discuss the next topic. But that is a brief overview of this. And it is a draft because there are portions in here where I need to confirm with the Department of Code Enforcement and Community Development on a timeframe through which they would be comfortable putting this in place. And I have met with Director Riggs. He is on board with this program. And they are currently sort of canvassing the city to assess where these retailers are, already are. And so they will have an idea of the individuals that need to be contacted in order to begin this process. And it is a partnership between the city of Athens and the Athens City County Health Department as the administrator, Jack Pepper, is supportive of this and has confirmed that, yes, the Health Department will carry out the compliance checks. And I am certain that our recently retired Health Commissioner would be all in favor of this as well. So we do have the support of the bodies that would need to act in order to put this in place. A little bit more information. So I know this is a lot of new information, and I wanted to give people a draft to look at and think about. and I wanted to give people a draft to look at and think about. But I will say that this is, I didn't make up any of this language all by myself. It is a well-researched document that includes versions of other cities' already in place practices for this issue with just a few adjustments to make it match the structure here in the city of Athens. Members, be honest.
Yeah, it sounds pretty convincing. It sounds like a lot of extra work for code enforcement, which makes me a little nervous. And it mentions fees, but do you have an idea of what the fees would be? And also if they don't comply? Again, I haven't had a chance to look at it that closely.
Yeah, keep going.
Then somewhere they lose their license, I guess?
Yes.
I don't know. How does that work?
Go to the end and...
Okay.
So the initial fees I don't have in here yet because I don't know what they would be. But they would be determined based on the cost to administer, the actual, the application and distribution of the licenses and also for the Health Department to do the compliance checks. So the fees that we collect will be shared with the Health Department for administration. And there is a section also that the Athens City County Health Department shall engage in a continuing public health education program to explain and clarify the purposes and requirements of this ordinance to the persons affected by it and to guide tobacco retailers through the process that they need to take. As, but I think that our code office will make it pretty straightforward in terms of the application. There's even included in here the necessary information for an applicant to provide when they apply for a license. And so the licenses, in terms of work for code enforcement, they are issued annually. And it's, I'm going to work with Director Riggs on, when is a good time of year to have this? But I'm thinking something like the licenses all begin around July 1 and run to June 30, something like that. And anyone who wants to apply needs to put an application in place at least 30 days prior. And if they wish to renew, same thing. But I need to talk with code enforcement as far as what timeline would they think would work best for that? If they need 60 days prior for applications? If they want the licenses to start September 1st? Like, it can be dependent on what they need, but for that. But then after that, the enforcement is largely going to be done by the Health Department in terms of the compliance checks. And when a retailer applies for renewal, then there are several grounds on which that renewal can be declined, denied. And one is if they have violations. They could, they might not get a permit renewed. There's also the, it is a discretionary process in terms of whether or not their permit is revoked or is not renewed. Those are things that may be considered by code enforcement when issuing an initial permit or by, when deciding whether to renew one. But the city, in addition to the denial, suspension, or revocation of a license, the city may impose the following penalties for violations. And a first violation is a fine of no less than $500. Second violation within a three-year period, $750. And an automatic suspension of the ability to sell for seven days, minimum of seven days. A third is $1,000 fine. And again, that, the suspension of the ability to sell is for 30 days. And a fourth within three, oh, yeah, three years, is a $1,500 fine. And they are prohibited from distributing for three years. And that is in addition to, if the city wants to, they could deny the renewal of their permit entirely if they have that history. Yes, Member McCary?
Thank you for the work put into this proposal and the health focus. I am curious, just to clarify, there would be then for retailers, a state license and then also a local license? Or this would take over?
Tobacco retailers are not licensed by the state.
Okay.
They do have to do some paperwork for tax purposes. There's a tax licensing process, but not, nothing that's, that taxes tobacco, or licenses tobacco retailers.
Thank you.
So, so it's, the state has left it up to municipalities. Member Crowe?
I'll just echo my colleague's thanks to you for working on this. It's very important. I don't mean to make light of it in my last comment, which is that I didn't know an e-huka was a thing.
I didn't either. That's why I do research. Yeah, there are still some things that I don't know exactly what they are. But if folks who advocate for reduction in youth smoking have included them as things that should be restricted, then I want to list them because I think it is better to have a broader list of what is defined in tobacco products than a narrower. Yes, members, be honest.
Oh, this is a very minor point. But because we've been putting fees into a separate ordinance, so when you do this, if you could...
Yes, that is, I think it even says that fees shall be established by separate ordinance.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. So, but it will be, the ordinance will come along cited, establishing those fees.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, Member Reisner?
Any idea how many businesses will be affected by this?
Actually, no. But I know that code enforcement is working on that.
You know, it's going to cover everything from a filling station, a food store, a big box store. It's, in fact, I think it'd be easier to compile a list of businesses that would not be affected as opposed to a list of who will.
We just offer bonuses to those who are not. There's, so, full transparency as far as my working process in this. My initial thoughts were to only require licensing by retailers where 80% of their revenue comes from the sale of tobacco products. And that is something that I'm open to discussing with administration and with code enforcement as far as the administration of the program. However, when I did research on what other cities have done, they've, like, I thought, oh, well, if we do this, we're opening ourselves up to a lawsuit from some of the big box companies. But it's already in place in Columbus and Reynoldsburg and Cincinnati. And so, and there are no exceptions built in that I could see in their legislation for gas stations or big box retailers. So I think if I have the support of our city administration and code enforcement in terms of managing the volume, and it could be something that is implemented in stages to spread out the workload as far as the sort of rolling issuance of licenses, because the startup is going to be a lot of licenses issued. And so that is, but yeah, I had looked at really focusing in on businesses that are, the entire businesses is tobacco products. But when I looked at it, I'm like, well, hey, other cities are doing it. So I decided to start out with the all included rather than some. So that, yes, Members Wink? Oh, sorry, did?
I think that we're thinking there's around 50, plus or minus a dozen.
Okay.
We haven't counted totally. We think there are about 11 that are primary, that's the, in the category of, you know, the primary businesses is tobacco products. So it's a lot, but it's a manageable number.
Only 15?
Like I said, plus or minus a dozen, but...
Members Wink?
In terms of date of license, I don't know what the answer to this is. It'd be interesting to see when liquor licenses are due. Because even though they're different cigarettes and liquor, they are kind of similar. And if liquor licenses are due on a certain date, it might be wise to make cigarettes at the same time just to make it convenient and easy for those businesses. Plus, it's a little trigger.
I think that that's, that's a very different thing because it's a state-administered and it's, yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that's through the Department of Commerce. And I can get more intel on that, but I would imagine that that just happens to be when that actual permit was released to bar or restaurant X, Y, and Z.
Always opposed to a uniform date?
So it's a rolling thing, so it's not all at one time that they get renewed.
We are moving to an automatic renewal of February. Yeah, we just received notice.
From the Department of Commerce. So it'll go to February, but that's state.
Yeah, no, no, I know, they're different things. But just, I'm just thinking to mind, okay, end of the year, I got to take care of X, X, you know, Y and Z. Second thing, any thought of how what happens on December 7 might affect this? Particularly when I get into this section on tobacco products and we're talking about papers, bongs, pipes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, we'll talk about that next. But it is, it is part of the thinking.
Okay. And the third thing, you did name some cities. Are there any like cities, like Athens? College towns, small towns, semi-rural towns that are doing this? And yeah, how it's worked for them?
I don't know because honestly, it's easier to find draft legislation that has been sort of really thoroughly reviewed from larger cities. So I, but do you know of, Mr. Mayor?
My understanding is that Oxford has gone through something similar to this and then some. Oxford even went down the road of having a moratorium on any other establishments that are selling tobacco products or in particular vaping products. But we can certainly look at...
Look for some other comparables.
Oxford, that would be a strong comparable to the city of Athens.
And then the last thing, under enforcement and penalties, and this came up when we were talking about the citations for bars and things. Who is going to be cited for the $500 or the $1,000?
The person who holds the license.
Does it say that in here?
It, there is, yes.
Under the definition of tobacco retailer.
Yeah, as far as who is responsible.
Tobacco retailer at the top? Page three?
Yes, thank you. So, any person, partnership, joint venture, society, club, trustee, trust, association, organization, or corporation who owns, operates, or manages any tobacco retail establishment. Tobacco retailer does not mean the non-management employees of any tobacco retail establishment.
So somebody goes into Kroger's, buys cigarettes, and they're not 21. Who is, who would they go cite?
Probably management there because it excludes non-management. But also, I think compliance is less of an issue. But, yeah, but it is, it's, we would be starting with the name of the person who holds the license. When they, as far as the application.
I'm just thinking something like Kroger's. It's probably not the local manager whose name's on that license. It's probably somebody down on Vine Street in Cincinnati. I'm just, because we spent a lot of time talking about this with the, with the bar owner situation. It'll be nice to have it, you know, consider, clear and concise.
I'll work on clarifying it based on, like, guidance from the law director and from what is happening in other cities because we can't be the only place dealing with both small, local, and large corporations.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Members F?
Thank you, Member Grace. I want to preface this, what I'm going to say with, I do think that something like this is a good idea. I do have a couple of concerns. One of them is under the enforcement and penalties. I, and maybe this sort of speaks to my lack of knowledge and how all enforcement penalties are written. It makes me slightly uncomfortable that it's written for a second violation, that it's a minimum of seven days. That to me reads like someone from the city could say, hey, we're going to give this to you now, the minimum seven days. We're going to make it two years. And hmm, that feels, for a business, if that's their sole source of income, that means they have one person who's made a mistake twice in the past three years. They're out of business now if they can't sell anything they're trying to. To me, that's concerning. I think the idea of a maximum penalty makes a lot more sense.
Well, maximum is they lose their license entirely.
Well, I think that having a reasonable maximum, because right now, the maximum for two days is to essentially lose your license.
Well...
Or up to three years of suspension, which is big.
Any tobacco retailer, it's in addition to the denial, suspension, or revocation of a license. They, so...
So for a second violation, they can just lose, for one violation, they can lose their license?
They could theoretically lose their license.
To me, that's ridiculous. I don't mean to sound like harsh or anything, but that's, that's a huge, one mistake and your business is done for something that that's their only sales? That's big. That's really big. I mean, one violation? We don't do that with liquor.
No.
No. I mean, yeah, like, that's, that could ruin someone's business. And again, I am in favor of this. I think this is a good idea. But I don't think that some of the way this is written is appropriate just because that could be a serious impact for some people. One of the others for me is, I was reading about the 500-foot barrier, which obviously makes a lot of sense, a lot of sense, especially with like some of the goals, preventing youth smoking. Totally on board, I get that. But I would really want to make sure that we know, is that going to cause a current business to have to close?
No, I have to include grandfather clause.
Okay, so that's included, okay, cool.
It is not drafted because I wasn't certain of how many and where. But yeah, as far as, for, there are businesses that are well within 500 feet of schools and other...
I was thinking about that time at the middle school.
Yep, and the community center on East State Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, another one. Yeah, that makes me feel good. My heart is warm.
Yeah, so they're grandfathered in. And also, that is a reason that a permit may be denied. So it doesn't, it absolutely say, if your place of business is 450 feet from a school, it's flat out, you're going to get denied. It is, it is a reason that it may be. But existing businesses will not be denied a permit based on their location.
That makes a lot of sense. My last question is...
Or license, not permit.
Oh, yeah, fair, different things. Would we be seeing this at first reading next week?
If I can pull it together, yes. That is my goal.
So my tail-end question, or my leading, that is a leading question too. My only other concern then is that because this is a fairly substantial change in the city of Athens, if it's not up for first reading next week, that means it's going to have to come up at a special session for this to get through by the end of the year. And that to me starts feeling like we're rushing this, which, again, I'm going to say it again, just for emphasis on the right syllable, I do think this is 100% a good idea. I think that we absolutely should regulate this. It makes sense. But I don't want us to necessarily rush this through without people having the proper time to actually absorb it and understand it. Because like we said, there's over 50 businesses at least that this is going to affect. And I don't want people to miss it because they are used to the on-off week of committee, regular, committee, regular. Yeah.
Yeah, so it is my intention to work out the kinks and the details so that it is ready for first read. And then can you go through the normal schedule?
I want to also add on that you have a very large amount of experience with crafting legislation that is complicated, so I have full faith that you can.
Thank you.
Yeah, just...
Either, yes, Member Reisner?
In your next alas, whereas, you say that the regulatory tool that further enables the city of Athens to monitor tobacco sales. I really don't see anything in this that monitors sales.
Whether, well, through compliance checks, whether they are selling to minors.
Well, the way I interpret it is, is how well is your business doing? How much are you selling? Uh, 20 products today or 50 or?
It does not, it does not allow us to do that. I can adjust the language if that's.
Well, that's the way I read it, yeah. I mean, you're, it looks like you're coming into my business and looking at my books and saying, oh, well, I see your sales are doing pretty damn good or or they're doing lousy, you know?
You're, you're.
Well, that's none of our business.
I see that your sales are in compliance with.
Well, what what you're concerned about is who is buying it and who they're selling it to.
Yes.
Okay, that's not what it says here.
Well.
Right?
It says monitor tobacco sales. Tobacco sales to minors are tobacco sales.
It's simply, uh, individual compliance.
Compliance, yes. So I can clarify the language there. But also, the whereas is don't become a part of code.
No, they're part of the history.
Yeah.
And if you go to court, it's.
It's intent.
Yep, they'll look at it.
Are there other comments or questions from any members of council administration?
I just have one comment, and that is that in my conversation with the Athens City School District Superintendent, Dr. Tom Gibbs, he's also in favor of having a piece of legislation like this with the amount of underage smoking and vaping that is being experienced not only in the middle school, but also now in the intermediate school, which is grades four through six.
So, thank you. Any comments or questions from the audience?
I'm Rob Dulich. I live in Morris Avenue here in the city and just representing myself. So I think this sounds like a great idea. I like also the potential for controlling how many permits are out there potentially because I think it's already out of hand. The city, just on Court Street or Uptown, there's five locations. There were six, one of them's closed. I was just looking at Google Maps. And on the screen for one of these locations, it says in the description on the map, a Candy Land of Vapes, which I think brings up something that was just touched on, that underage vaping and such. Does this licensing enable the city to manage what is being sold? Or is that the next piece of legislation on the agenda?
So this does not ban the sale of flavored vapes, just to to go directly to that point. That is something that has been discussed, that's something that I've considered is because Candy Land, that that goes right to the the target audience there. And it's not people who are over the age of 21, I don't think. But we, my perspective is that this is a starting point. And this at least tells us who is selling in the city. And it would be, if, the biggest thing to me is making sure that these sales are not happening to people under the age of 21. And rather than outright banning access to things to people who have, you know, at least mostly developed prefrontal cortices. They can make their own choices and and they will. But the the middle school is right next door to Uptown. And I, as a parent of a middle schooler, I know those middle schoolers all flock right uptown when school gets out if they don't have to catch the bus. So I think really targeting the the state law that's already in place that prevents the sale or prohibits the sale to folks under the age of 21 is through getting a handle on how to enforce that locally is a good starting step. And we could see where things go in the future, or other people can, because I won't be sitting here.
That's good, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, member sweet.
To Rob's point, I just looked up when Oxford, Mr. Mayor passed this, not only did they do something similar to us, they passed density legislation too. One establishment per 1,500 people.
Next piece. Next piece of legislation on the agenda. So are we ready to move to the next piece of legislation? That is the overview of licensing. A step that is also recommended as an effort to also support a diversified business economy. And have keep, maintain a handle on on what is being sold in in large quantities in different areas. Strongest tool the city has is zoning. And through that, what I will, I will be bringing legislation next week also that in in the form of a resolution asking the planning commission to take up zoning changes. And those include a few different things. But one is like for our business zones in the city. We have, I believe, B1, there are at least 10 distinct geographic areas that are all B1. And so one part is going to be to label each of those with a a number or a letter tag so we know which B1 zone we're talking about. So that's one step. And then to us, the Office of Code Enforcement is assessing how many tobacco retailers currently exist in each of these zones. And so then this zoning would place a maximum number of businesses that can hold a tobacco license, a tobacco retail license in each distinct area. So we'll have B2D, which is our uptown business. But we also have B3 and B1. And if we just say B1 or B3, they're, they could all be really concentrated in one place. And I, the other driver, I mentioned, you know, primary, primary above all with both of these pieces is preventing youth from developing addictions that lead to massive health issues. But another one is, I really like a diversity of businesses in like the uptown stretch of businesses. And as you mentioned, there's some changes coming in the future for what is legal in Ohio. And the state is gonna be in control of licensing recreational marijuana or adult, adult recreational use. And that's gonna be a significant process. But one thing that I believe we can do with our zoning is in addition to saying in B2D, there can be this many businesses operating that hold a tobacco retail license, we can also say there can only be this many businesses that hold a state-issued marijuana, marijuana adult-use dispensary license. So prior to those licenses being granted, we could have in place a maximum number that would be allowed per zone in the city as part of our zoning ordinances. This is something that I know for sure can be done, has been done and is effective for tobacco retail licenses. So I believe that we would be well within our authority to do the same thing. It is not too different from liquor permits, except, well, as a city, nobody created a restriction on the number that could be held in a zone until there were already pretty established entities. So in working with the Office of Code Enforcement, sorry, Micah, I feel like I don't see you very often because of the angle. Then, um, there, the, this legislation would be requesting that the zoning is adjusted, which has to happen from, starting with the planning commission. They have to, they can take it up at our request. City Council sends it to them. Then they would review it at their next meeting and then send their recommendation back to council for changes to city zoning. So this is a bit longer process, but is something that we thought was worth taking up as quickly as possible following the last election. Are there questions about this? Yes, members of illness.
Well, it sounds great, but my first thought was, you're not gonna limit the number of bars downtown.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Entertainment.
But we could limit the number of businesses that have a license to sell tobacco.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm saying we're well, well past the ability to limit the number of of alcohol establishments. But we're not past the ability to limit the number of retail marijuana dispensaries. And so I think it's best to be ahead of that one. Because if if you're, if you're looking at business and who can afford the highest rent or a property proximal to a large pop, adult population that might be interested in in purchasing products, that that might be a driver for who gets leases for particular locations. And so I would like to see some of our different zones maintain a diversity of businesses. And we have a tool, zoning and restriction of number of permits per zone through which we could do that. Is that, I explained it relatively clearly? Thanks. It's, yeah, so. Any, any questions from the committee? Other members of council? Yes?
I didn't miss anything, because my brain tends to get lost in its own thoughts when things are being said. Is this, is this specifically for recreational marijuana or is this is also for tobacco products?
Also for tobacco. So there would be two different numbers. One, that is the maximum number of retail tobacco licenses that can be held by businesses in a specific area. And the other is the maximum number of, let's see, state-issued marijuana adult-use dispensary licenses. Very, you know, convenient to say. Now, it could be that one business holds both of those. I think that there's a pretty high likelihood of that. And so it would, in that case, it would reduce the total number of businesses, which in my mind would be a positive thing.
Follow-up, follow-up question, if I may? Going back to what I brought up with the previous thing, would would current places also be grandfathered in?
They would.
Just making this, throw that out there. Seems like it would be done, but I just wanna ask just in case.
We, um, yeah, we would not be forcing anyone to close because there are already too many in a zone. However, there is a distinct possibility that the number of allowed business holders with a license in a particular zone might be set lower than what the current number of businesses is, such that if one closes or, yeah, and these licenses are not transferable. You can't move them to a different location nor to a different individual holder of the license. So if if the business closes, then that's one less. And again, it's gonna take me sitting down with code enforcement with the numbers they've they've rounded up to see where they all are and what those numbers are. And I'll work out reasonable numbers for each location. Yes, member Crowell.
So that just brought up a question that I have, which is that the state controls the number of liquor licenses that we have. So if at some point the state takes over this rule, our local home rule would be?
Except zoning. We could still say, oh, there can be a certain number per capita, but you can't put them on Court Street or you can't put anymore, we already have three in this zone. Sorry, you can get your license from the state, but you can't operate your business in this zone. So that's why I feel like it's worth it to go through the steps to put it into zoning is because it will hold up.
I don't wanna open a whole can of worms. But has that been proposed for liquor establishments? Zoning?
Not here. I don't know if anywhere.
Just thought I'd throw it out there.
Other questions? Any comments or questions additions from the administration?
I just have a comment and that's to remind council that the planning commission meets, you know, every other Thursday here in council chambers at noon. And so the next point in time in which we could bring it up in the process is it comes up first as a communication. And then two weeks later, it comes forward as a case. And then the planning commission, at that point in time, if they have the information that is needed to move it forward, we would vote on it. So looking at the calendar, December 7th is the next meeting for the planning commission. We are not meeting this Thursday, nor are we meeting on Thanksgiving, since we won't be hoping for business on Thanksgiving Day. So it would be December 7th, which means it comes up as a communication on the 7th and then two weeks later, it would come up. So planning commission could have an opinion or a vote on something like this before the end of the year, but it would be to the new council moving it forward in 2024 for them to take up the established resolution from this year with the request that the planning commission take this on as a, and and look at the zoning and implement, or at least come forward with what our recommendation is via vote. And then it would come to council at the beginning of the year. Actually, it would come up in committee again in January, I suppose, or it's, since it's, yeah, because it's a new commit, it's new council.
So, yeah, and that's, it made sense to go ahead and introduce both of these issues concurrently. But yes, it, that is absolutely valid. It it won't come back to this council from the planning commission. However, the planning commission can send it to the next council. So you all have to remember everything. Any other comments or questions? City administration and audience? Okay. I think that concludes, yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. We'll move on to city and safety services committee, and that's Councilmember McCary as chair and Councilmembers Grace, Swank and Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysli. We have two agenda items for city and safety services this evening. And I believe they will take a little time. The first is amending ordinance 48-23 Dairy Lane Stagecoach Sewer Post-Construction Surface Restoration. It was just last May that we were hearing a lot about Project 317 and the Dairy Lane Stagecoach Sewer, city-county sewer expansion. And now this is a post-construction surface restoration that I'll ask our city and safety services director to explain.
This is pretty straightforward. The the OWDA loan that we're using, loan program that we're using to pay for this, that regionalization loan for the sewer part of it and then just water funds for the water part of it. We'll pay for things to go back as is, but not better. And we want it to be better. And and one of the things that we want better are pedestrian facilities along along that stretch of roadway. So we're asking for an amendment to add funds to put back pavement over top of the sewer line that runs underneath the what's currently a multi-use path from the South Side Park to South Park Drive and then the construction of a sidewalk all the way out past the Dairy Barn as part of this project.
Thank you. I think only clarifying question I would have is it, is this a common challenge that we are trying to build back better but haven't built that into the construction costs?
The the challenge isn't that. The challenge is is the particular loan program that we're using, that realization loan is very, very specific to the the infrastructure under the ground and the pump station or the lift stations, rather, as opposed to the, you know, surface restoration, other than what is torn up just as part of the project.
Thank you. Questions from other committee members? Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, Mr. McCary. Director Stone, how does this connect with the Ridge's development program, project?
I certainly won't detract from it. You know, I think we're a little ahead of any kind of design work that the the new community authority and the and the subsequent developers that that, you know, kind of function underneath the new community authority propose. You know, understanding that the, kind of the first area to be looked at are are the area along Dairy Lane, specifically because the infrastructure is already in place, I think this makes it that much easier basically to and attractive for for those particular homes to go into that area.
But are you looking at curb cuts? I mean, if they don't have designs yet, is this gonna be a sidewalk that's then gonna be?
I mean, there'll have to be curb cuts, but it can be well done, you know, when the time comes. I don't know how many driveways. I mean, it may be, you know, a shared driveway where there's only one access point and then it goes back out. You know, we'll really have to look at kind of how that gets. You know, we'll really have to look at kind of how that gets laid out by the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from other committee members? Other members of council? Administration?
Rob Delish, Moore's Avenue. I knew I was going to say something, right? It's a great idea. I think we need to make it more accessible for places like access to the Dairy Barn, for example. I know this has been talked about for a while. I've heard EPW staff talking about the possibility of a sidewalk on Dairy Lane. Glad to hear this might become to fruition. And speaking, I guess, informally as a member of the new Pedestrian Insecurity and Bicycle Task Force, glad to hear this, and will report this back to the rest of the committee, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Believe with that, we'll move on to our second City and Safety Services Committee agenda item for the evening, which is Fire Safety Compliance Occupancy Update. As folks recall, and as even mentioned earlier this meeting, we have had concerns about fire safety and overcrowding in bars, and we've been hearing some of those reports directly from our fire staff and City and Safety Services Director. It is my understanding that things have improved in terms of the number of violations seen at our Uptown Bars, that the, there may have been one violation issued during the Halloween Black Party by the state fire marshal, but overall that bar staff seem to be getting things together such that we are seeing greater compliance. So it is my sense that we need to provide an update to the public about this issue and continue to monitor with the help of our city administration, but at this time that the ordinance previously proposed can remain tabled. So I want to share that update and invite Director Stone to add any additional commentary or updates if there's anything more recent from that overview of things getting better in October, but.
I can certainly add to that. I had a conversation late last week, I believe it was Thursday, with Dan DeLuca, who, you know, manages one of our Uptown Bars. And the Tavern Owners Association has been established to where they have now met twice. I did ask the question, and that being, as I mentioned in council, to the large number of bar owners that were in here, that the fire chief, the police chief, and myself would like to be and should be attending those meetings so that we're all singing from the same sheet of music and understanding each other loud and clear. Clearly, we have gotten the attention of the bar owners, and so we will continue in engaging with the city administration and the Tavern Owners Association moving forward so that everyone understands each other when it comes to issues like the overcrowding of establishments uptown, or citywide for that matter.
Thank you. Can you comment on approximately how many tavern owners have opted to join at this point?
I don't know that number, but if the attendance on that evening in City Council is any indicator, it is a significant number at this point in time, because it would affect, you know, all tavern owners, not bar owners, but the entire Tavern Owners Association.
And I just don't have the historical knowledge to know how the former Bar Owners Association worked. Was it, was it something that operated with, with bylaws and regular meeting times, or was it a lot less formal than that?
I, as I understand, it was less formal than that. An interesting collective of interested parties that would attend those meetings, and then it went defunct, it just stopped meeting. As I indicated to council when the bar owners did come to council chambers, that during, during the pandemic in 2020 and 2021, we had several Zoom meetings, but it was basically to talk through the regulations that were coming down from the state in terms of social distancing requirements and how many, what occupancy would look like during the heat of the pandemic as things started to reopen again. And so, and that was a large number of bar owners that would attend that. So I suspect that as we move forward in time, that we'll have consistent meetings. I have requested that those meetings be during the daytime hours, not in the evenings. That's the most logical time in which my staff can attend these meetings as well as the bar managers when they aren't busy, which is usually in the 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock timeframe. So I'm, I'm on it. I'm keeping on them to make sure that we have lines of communication that are wide open and people understand each other.
Thank you. We'll take questions and comments from other members of the committee. Other members of council? Any additional comments from administration? Or our audience, any questions or comments on this update? Wonderful. That concludes City and Safety Services for the night.
Thank you, Councilmember McCary. Last is our Transportation Committee with Councilmember Reisner as Chair, joined by
Thank you, Madam President. Transportation Committee has just two items here. The first is the Amendment on Ordinance 142-22, West Union Street Improvements, Project Number 322, to add additional ODOT funding.
I believe it was $100,000 that was awarded to us from the ODOT Office of, forgive me, I'm not going to remember the particular phrase, but it's the, it's like the economic development part of ODOT. So, you know, very small addition in the, in the overall scheme of this particular project, but hey, we'll take any money that is, is, it's not our money to have to, have to pay towards the project. And so this just appropriates and authorizes that additional funding coming from the state of Ohio on this project.
Okay. Any questions from committee? Member Allen?
Does this include the, what's the name of the street? Herald Street access? Is that part of this project?
The project is all one project. This particular funding was specific to Union Street, but it's, it was all bid as one project, so for all intents and purposes, it's all together.
In 2024, 2025, I can't remember what, what we're looking at.
So Herald, Herald Avenue is under construction now, and that, the extension in support of the wider Union Street project, because it's necessary for the maintenance of traffic, necessary to be open for the maintenance of traffic with the utility work on, on Union particular. We believe that the utility work on West Union will start in the, in earnest in December and January. That's work that can happen during winter months, so it's, it's, it's running now.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the committee? Other members of council? Member Spielness?
I had someone who mentioned to me that they're wondering about sidewalks along West State Street, and is that, is there some plans to do something there because from where the extension attaches and then down and towards the ball field?
Currently, there are sidewalks that I believe end at the water treatment plant, or there's a sidewalk on the south side of West State Street that ends at the water treatment plant. So we'd have to add walk in front of the current bus garage in order to reach the walk on Herald Avenue. Certainly, that's something we can look at. It's not part of this project now, but it's not that long of a distance to.
That seems odd not to finish that.
Well, it, I mean, it's a function of history, it's not, it just was outside the scope of the project.
There's also some, some features down there that are going to be somewhat challenging, but like, we can certainly look at them, in particular, the water filling station that sits there to where people basically are pulling off of West State Street with their large vehicles with water bowzers on them to fill up with water. And, but anyway, we can certainly look at some kind of design down there.
Other questions? Okay, let's move on to the second item. East State Street Signal Improvements, Project Number 367, Design, Construction, and Construction Engineering. Back to you.
I was hoping you had the document in front of you there. I don't have the exact dollar figure in front of me, but the City of Athens was awarded approximately $430,000 from the Ohio Department of Transportation. And it was, this is actually a congestion and air quality mitigation grant. And so it's a, it's a grant to improve signal operations on East State Street in the, in the five-lane portion and the interchange. That signal network went in with the widening project, and it's got quite a bit of age on it. You know, we think that a lot of the actuation and synchronization is, is, is less than functional right now, or it's, it's damaged and it's not as functional as it, as it used to be due to, you know, age over time. And so this project will, you know, replace those controllers with, you know, new modern controllers and also get it back in, in, in better operation, just to be able to move more traffic more smoothly.
Question from committee? Member Swank?
So that'll extend from the project plant bid there at Bob Evans east to how far?
It will actually include Home Street as well. But then it will go east to the Walmart intersection. The Lowe's intersection is outside of the synchronized system, basically, but it's far enough down that I don't think it really has that much of an impact.
Oh, yes.
Clerk of Council had the documentation. The project is for $429,658.
That's close.
$300 off.
All these numbers rattling around.
It's unforgivable. Other questions? Other members of council? Audience? Going once, twice. That concludes Transportation Committee.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned at 9:57 p.m.